Session of the County Commission dated at two o'clock today on the fifth of July. And the first meeting we have is discussion on the opioid settlement with Weaver Human Services. And the commission and today from Weaver Human Services, we have Kevin Eastman, Jed Burton and Michelle Jensen here. Welcome here, everybody.
Thank you.
The commissioners and Scott Park is sitting in because he's always worried about the money and what we do.
I had someone that.
Well, isn't that the truth?
Oh, true.
He worried, he's like my cat over at Great Western, you know, always wonder what, okay, what are you gonna do next?
We're so lucky.
We are. All right. Good to have you all here. So Kevin, go ahead. We'll turn time over to you. Tell us what you're thinking.
Thank you commissioners for allowing us to be here in person on the work meeting. I guess it's a work meeting.
That's exactly what it is.
I brought you each the document that I sent last week that Michelle had typed up for us.
Good.
We met a couple of weeks ago. And did kind of a gap analysis and anticipation that this money would be arriving in Weaver County at some point that you as commissioners had had some discussions around this money.
This guy was kind of the heavy for the state right here. Well, I was, but I emailed back and said we hadn't had any discussions to that point.
Yeah.
Oh, we really haven't. I mean, we more than a passing this or that. That's about all we've said, right, Gage?
Yeah, where we come to this agreement is let's take the settlement, let's not take.
Yeah, that's right. So that's, so really you're looking at a blank slate on this side.
Yeah.
We, we have no predetermined things here.
Well, great. And that was our intention was just to get here. And obviously when we're talking about opiates, we're talking about people's lives that have been ruined and they're gonna need treatment and rehabilitation to whatever degrees are needing so that we can get them hopefully back as productive members of society. I left my glasses. So this is gonna be really interesting and I'm gonna have to defer to Jed and Michelle, but yeah, I know.
Do you want to pair? Well, I've got a pair of the next year of readers.
And it's okay because, you know, anticipation of they're the deputy directors at Weber Human Services and they've been in the negotiation, not in the negotiation, the discussions with us at Weber Human Services and Michelle's the one that drafted up the document for us. Jed had all the input with it. So they're the ones that I'm gonna defer to. There's a grid for easy summary of the areas that we're recommending for this money to be spent on.
So this 1.1 million you've got listed here, Michelle, that's two payments, right?
Where's the 1.1 million?
Oh, yeah.
So.
Cause our first payment here is.
Well, it will be, it will look this year. So if you look at the grid.
I've looked at it for.
The amount that the county is getting varies every single year. So it goes from a low of 597,000, I think the last seven years of the payment structure. But like in years four and five, it's like 1.1 million, like it just varies. It's all over the board.
The first payments we get and we're getting two years.
Correct. And it'll be about just over a million.
Yeah.
That's two years.
Million and a half.
And what, do we know when that is anticipated to come?
Any day.
Any day. We know it's coming.
Well, I, I'm texting with Chris Crocker right now asking him if this is, this dispersment schedule has been approved yet.
Yeah. So. One thing we're pretty careful around, we don't wanna spend any money till.
Till you have it.
John Bond tells me it's in the bank.
And the check cleared?
Yeah, small bills. No, we want, we like small bills.
Well, Gates, just before you walked in the room, I was telling them that I was negotiating this thing and
Yeah.
I had no confidence at all
Yeah.
that the companies were in a position at that point to actually start paying these, these agreed on amounts.
Yeah, or just, you know, filing others, you know, appeal and it goes back into court and they don't pay for another 10 years.
Right.
So I mean, anything could happen.
Right. Well, the other side of this is we ended up 50/50 on this for the state. So the state's got the same amount of money that the counties do.
Yeah.
Well, when it comes down to spending, the state doesn't have any ability to spend this for opioid. The, unless they create new program. But you know, for all intents, and this is the debate we had when we were going back and forth is the fact that they're gonna end up giving probably half of theirs directly back to the counties anyway.
It's very possible.
Cause they don't have any other way to spend it. And then as programs come on, they probably come up with something.
Yeah.
You know, they always do.
The local authority treatment is through the counties and so, yeah.
I suspect if we're careful, we'll watch what we're doing, that we have the ability to get half of what they're gonna get again.
Probably.
Yeah.
It'd be nice. And as you're considering several proposals, there'll probably be other things that you'll wanna consider with that. So.
Okay. So just so you know right now, we do not have any other proposals. Okay.
I kinda wanted to describe how we came up with this. Sorry, did you wanna?
No, I just, I loved your little grin after what you said.
Um, so at the, as a part of the MOU that the county signed to receive this money, it has two schedules of allowed uses. Schedule A are core strategies. So they pulled out of the list of approved uses, these are the really, really important things that we think the money should be spent on. And then Schedule B is the list of approved things that the money can be spent on, which incorporates Schedule A.
They're attached.
Yep.
Schedule A is the most critical.
Yes.
Okay.
Core items.
So the core, they're highlighted there. The actual MOU is a separate document.
Yes, Commissioner Jenkins, they're, they're referenced in this document, but we can get to the actual document that Michelle's describing.
Oh, so this is just an MOU.
That's just pulls out of the MOU.
You know, we need that document.
I've got it right here if you guys wanna make a copy of it.
Yeah, well, we can leave this one with you. We've got it. You can make other copies.
Okay.
But what we did as an organization is went through, especially through the core strategies, every single item and said, how are we doing as a county? Where do we have gaps? Where are the critical needs that we are currently meeting? Especially given the fact that the feds have actually put a lot of money into OUD treatment, treatment for opiate use disorders over the past, started over the past probably eight years. So we've slowly increased resources available to this population within our county. We have open access to Medicaid assisted treatment. If you have an opiate use disorder, you're addicted to heroin and wanna go on Suboxone, come on over. We have open doors to those individuals. So there are a lot of things that this county has done to treat this population already. So we wanted to kind of do a gap analysis. Where do we still have gaps? So that's how we came up with the list. We didn't pick and choose. You know, we like this one and not that one. We really did look as to where we still had gaps in the county. And that's how we got to this list.
Do you want us to start going down the list?
Yeah.
It shouldn't take long. And Michelle's done a really good write-up of this, but all of these would be kind of out of clinical area here. And we did write up a request from Morgan as well. Actually, I say, a lot of these are coming out of clinical area. There is one significant ask out of here for prevention as well. So we'll go through all of those, but just to begin with, on, on the first page there, navigators for continuation of MAT after ER and detox. So we've got a lot of clients in the community who hit the, hit the hospital, right? Because they've overdosed or they're trying to come off or they're trying to detox. And so they go to McKay or they go to Ogden Regional, they have a good detox program there. But then once they leave, that's the problem. Safety net's gone. They're back out in the community. They're back in the same housing. And one of the programs.
So you're saying that something in between there.
Something to help them transition.
One of the programs that USARA, if you're familiar with USARA, it's an advocacy group for those who use substances. And a program that's worked for them in the past is called Bridges, but they have peer support specialists, employees like case managers who have lived experience who go to the detox facilities, who go to the hospitals and the emergency departments. And they reach out to the individuals while they're there getting the treatment. And then they follow them once they leave the detox center or the inpatient unit. And they're, they're like a good friend who's gonna help them get to the appointments, make sure they have reminders and continue to encourage them to get there. It's been a good program, never took off in Weaver County in part because of funding. So we would like to implement something like that with two to three full-time peer support specialists that can respond to people in the emergency room and, and in detox and, and go up and get them set up with treatment. We have the treatment. We don't have the people to help them follow through. And you know, a lot of times when they get out, that they, they want the medication right back, even though they've been through three days of detox, that's not enough to get rid of the cravings, of course, right? So they get back out, go back to the same living environment, they're right back in it. They need, we feel like this program would help them at least get linked to the appropriate outpatient services. And that's what we're looking for. It's not gonna work for everybody, but it does work for something. So that's just one spoken as well.
And you mentioned clients. They're actually not clients yet. I wanna clarify that.
Perspective clients.
Those in need.
Yeah.
But there's a need for that. So you said two to three and you intend to do that with 150,000?
Yep. Yeah, they're not.
Two, two peer support.
Peer support specialists are not that expensive.
Okay.
About 15 to $18 an hour, plus benefits.
All right. So that makes it work for 150.
Yes.
And again, that's, it may not cover the full need, but we don't know what the full need is yet. We'd like to start small and if we have to expand, we'll ask for more later.
When Jed talks about lived experience, their peers, so they've been through the program, they rehab from it. It's a trusting somebody that's, hey, I've done this and I know what you're going through and you can beat this and you can
Sure.
get to treatment and you can survive treatment and get a life again. I'm proof of that. Yeah.
I like Hannah with OPD.
Yeah, no, I get it.
She's.
Oh, yeah. That's a good plan. The question I do have, and I know Scott Parker will ask it if I don't. So I'm assuming these are gonna be employees of Weaver Human Services.
Or we contract with you, Sarah.
Okay, but so either way, let's say that these funds, and I'm always internal optimist, but I know how the government operates. And they give you money and then they take it away.
Right.
So I just wanna make sure we don't get into a long-term obligation and all of a sudden these funds go away. You know, the money disappears.
Right.
And I'm not saying it will, but if it does, you need to be prepared for that.
We've got, we've got 18 years.
Well, unless they go big.
Unless they change it, yeah.
Unless they, well, yeah, let's look at 18 years, but I know, again.
Well, we'll be trying to figure out how to incorporate it.
And if 18 years is great, but I think there needs to be something in those contracts that if this, if this funding source goes away, you go away.
Yeah.
That's also why we were really careful, like because the funding varies so much.
Right.
We, we aren't asking for any more than the minimum amount the county would receive, cause we don't wanna develop million dollar programs when most years we're only gonna have $600,000.
Right.
And I will say, you Sarah came in and tried to implement this Bridges program about three years ago in Weaver County. And they ended up having to back that out because there wasn't enough.
That's, that's my concern.
Yeah. So that is something that we'd have to be prepared to do and so the next one is expansion of recovery support services. This is something that we offer to a small population right now. Primarily like drug court recipients, but these are, these are needed community resources that impact them from getting treatment. You know, first and last month rent or deposit, gas vouchers to get to treatment, those types of things and work. So we spend a whole bunch on bus passes, gas vouchers, those types of things.
Tools to get into a job, work boots, so that they can get a job, money to take the GED, you know, these steps to get them to be productive citizens.
It's been a very successful program. I'm sure there are people who take advantage of it, right? We do our best to screen them and to make sure that we're good stewards of the money, but.
Under this, you think that qualifies us?
Oh, yeah. So under, and I've listed where in the MOU. So if you look Schedule A, so these are core strategies. B4, C4 and E4 all include these recovery support services.
It'll make more sense when you have the.
Yeah, I should make copies of that. I apologize.
Okay.
So anyway, we, we already have access to some of these funds for a small population like those involved in specialty courts, but we don't have funding for the vast population, that the majority of the folks that we serve, this would be a good opportunity.
But we have the infrastructure in place to manage it because we're already doing it.
You're gonna do it now.
Yep.
And then sober living, you're familiar with that. We just purchased this facility out on Lincoln that we're gonna have individuals and families stay in. We're anticipating and we're building a little bit into the budget each month for folks who can't afford to pay their full rent or might miss a month or two or for maintenance, those types of things. But we know with this population, we do have a, a, a payment schedule that, that's graduated where they start at zero and then one through six, we hope they're only there six months, they start to pay a hundred dollars or more each, each month. And we know that that's in a perfect world, or at least a good world, and sometimes we don't live in even a good world or they don't. And so we're asking for $50,000 to supplement that when people don't pay for their rent or there are damages, we're also looking at purchasing another sober living facility with some money that we're getting from the Alliance for MHC.
You guys actually made a pretty decent buy on it.
We did.
We really did.
What was the matter with that project?
What was the matter? A girl was wrong with it?
Yeah, well, it was yourself for a while.
And then it went off the market and then it came back.
Followed that along a little and I just, you know, with things like that, and you start saying, well, something wrong with this?
You know, you said the same time we were trying to do that school, that real pride in the sky one, I don't know. I, I think someone was watching out for us.
Timing was everything.
It was.
This appears to be much more up your alley.
It does.
Yeah, this seems to be a really good fit, Kevin, for what you've done.
It's a good start.
That was, is that 12 or 13 units?
11 units.
11 units.
Yeah, we'll use four for family.
We're on about 13th of Lincoln.
Yep. Four for family and then we'll have seven that we can just put individuals in.
Yeah.
I never did see it. My company said that was a.
I haven't seen it, but I get, yeah.
The rest of the, the grounds there, the, the facilities aren't quite as new, but these two, I think were built in 17 or 18.
Last ones.
And they're nice facilities.
Yeah.
They really are. I mean, we, I don't know how we got the deal that we did, but we're grateful.
Well, that's good. Turned out. So I'm happy, Kevin.
So we're asking for $50,000 there to support that program, right?
Makes sense.
Support. So Kevin, you might wanna speak to the support for the community coalitions. This is the line item that does represent prevention, $175,000.
I don't know how much any of you know about, but we've established coalitions throughout all of the geographical boundaries of the high schools in Weaver County.
Combs.
Combs. Yep.
In the Weaver County School District.
Yeah.
We don't have them in Ogden.
What's that called?
Combs.
CTC.
CTC.
CTCs, yeah. From you, you are familiar. Yep. And this money would be just to strengthen those coalitions in the causes for prevention. Campaigns that they do, the educations they do, the different classes with the community, all those types.
There are different mayors out there like this a lot, Roy.
Been successful, hasn't it?
Who is on there at 911? That's our chair now. He's a high school teacher.
Yeah, Porter.
And he's involved heavily in this and he doesn't have anything to say about it.
Yeah.
It's looking at those individual communities and what are their current risk factors and protective factors? And addressing them at the community level versus, you know, what's the state telling us to do?
Yeah.
They've been around for over a decade. Bonneville Cone was the first one we established in it.
I thought Roy was the first one.
They had a different initiative with that 2020 and then as that got off the ground and we got the Combs going, it all kind of folded into one. Yeah.
Anything you wanna say about that, Kevin?
Nope.
Okay. It's, it's a great program.
Well, maybe real quick, just that Morgan County's money amounted to about $15,000 and that's our recommendation for Morgan is to put it all into prevention.
Well, any idea how that'll come down? Will Morgan get that and then have to give it to us?
No, I think they have their own.
They get to do, they got their own money.
Morgan County gets something.
Yeah. But as far as treatment, because with our inter-local, all the resources that we're talking about with the clinical, Morgan County residents have that ability to come and utilize those resources anyway. So we're building it for Morgan and Weaver County residents.
No, well, aren't you gonna acquire them to give you the money?
We're gonna request it.
15,000 for, for the coalition work. We wanna do prevention work up there.
So we have a separate request for them, separate presentation.
Okay. I just, I can let us know what's happening there, cause we don't want them to get all scot-free with it. Although they don't get much.
Yeah, they're getting.
I realize.
15,000, we're recommending all of that go to coalition work.
Is that their total amount?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have very little drug problem up there.
Yeah, they don't have any. Sorry.
They do have a little, though.
They do, they.
They have plenty.
They don't think.
They don't think they do.
No, we, we've had some issues in the past where, and, and understandable, they've had community members live there for years and years and don't think that their kids are going to be doing this and, and it's fairly common up there.
Yeah.
So, um, well, let's move down to a support program to help people expunge criminal records. So cottages of hope, I think you're familiar with that. They've had a, had a good program for years on expungement. So we either want to, we've reached out to them, we haven't heard back. We just reached out to them.
Last.
Yeah, so it's, they may be out of the office, some of them, but we wanna know because we, we're not sure they still have the expungement program running. And we either want to supplement their program and expand it or create a new one if they've, if it's, i- it isn't still alive.
You know, I'm pretty sure it is still alive.
Are you?
Yeah, they were our last LHC meeting and we talked about it a bit and I'm pretty sure they're still doing it.
Okay, I hope so, cause we, we thought maybe it had gone away.
Did Jeremy Motello come and present? Okay.
Jeremy's still there? Yeah, he was there.
He's a charismatic guy.
Fun in the back.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was there.
Yep.
Nice guy.
So we've reached out to them. We would like to utilize that to expand or supplement their program.
I mean, so many of our clients, this is what's limiting them to be productive citizens are these criminal records.
Well, I'm glad to hear you reaching out to some of these other nonprofits that already have a program, so they don't reinvent the wheel.
That's right. We can't get the staff.
And that's in the cottage of hope. I worked for them for years. That's a good program.
Really good program.
Definitely. They were highly successful and that's what we love that.
Jeremy, Jeremy's a motivated guy.
Yeah, no, he takes it serious.
He's been there for years and I know he could go make more elsewhere.
Oh, yeah.
But he's dedicated to that place. So good guy.
It's his baby.
Yep. And then the last one here is post-incarceration social program. So this is one that Wendy Davis Cox hit us up on. This is, this is part of that re-entry committee. They hold a meeting every single week, Tuesdays. And, and they wanna have something that entices people to come. Right? So they wanna have goodies, they wanna have some things that they can give away, some resources. And, and so Wendy had asked if we could put $25,000 in towards that re-entry coalition. What happens is that group gets together and they plan to go out to New Jersey, like they did this last year. And they have to just go around trying to pool money from the different organizations to be able to do it. And, and that's okay, but Wendy would like a fund that they can use for that re-entry group. And they, they've actually made some pretty good groundwork so far.
Yeah. All said and done, total is 600,000, which is about what we get every year. So.
Minimum, yeah.
Yep.
Well, it really isn't.
Well, I know.
What you get every year.
You get that much at least every year and then some years you get more.
Sometimes we'll get a little higher.
Yeah. Well, sometimes for the first five or six years, we'll get a million a year.
Yep.
And that's still. There will be some surplus.
Yes.
Yeah, there, there're gonna be other good requests that come through Sheriff's Office and everybody else, but.
I'm sure we'll have another few requests come in. Yeah.
Like this year, you're gonna get two payments hopefully at, at once and, and more money to spread around, but we didn't wanna develop program, ongoing programs that was reliant on funding that wasn't always gonna be there.
But I think these are the programs we feel strongly about that could make a real impact on the community here. We think we already offer really good treatment, plenty of medication assisted treatment for this population, but getting them motivated to come in and having somebody link them to services is really tough.
So Jed, have you guys got any idea of how bad the program is? Or the, the problem is in our area? And I know it's hard to determine that all the time because so much of it is underground and you just don't know.
You see the results in overdose deaths, right? That's really where you see.
But you know, I, today, coming back from our lunch, I was listening to the radio and they said that they were talking about youth deaths from overdose. And they said that 75% of them had fentanyl in their system.
Right.
That didn't mean it killed them, but they obviously do it because 75% had fentanyl in their system.
That many, huh?
Uh, and you know, all that's coming from China right there.
Yeah.
And they don't even know it's in there in a lot of cases.
A lot of times I've heard they lace it with fentanyl. Somebody's doing a different drug and all of a sudden they're dead or.
Yep.
In.
And no idea.
They're doing these fancy cocktails now.
Yeah. To get a better high.
Yeah. Of course, nobody knows.
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 Yeah, those guys, yeah. Those guys really don't care about the health of the end user.
No.
They don't. And, and a lot of times they'll test it on somebody who's been using this stuff all their lives and they'll say, whoa, that is really good stuff.
Really?
And then you, you hand the same thing to a high school kid who's trying it for the first time and they drop dead.
Tips them over.
Yes. So it's.
I absolutely agree with that.
Five times what they should have passed.
But there, there have been a number of years that Weaver County has had probably the second or third highest overdose, overdose death rate in the entire state.
An Ogden City is right there.
Yeah.
Ogden City is probably the.
I kinda thought we'd come off that.
And it has been trending down.
Yeah.
I think all of the resources that we have been putting in place over the past eight years has really helped that. All of our crisis services, MCOT, all of those things have really helped.
Prevention. Do you guys keep track of this and compare us to others in the state?
Oh, yeah.
It'd be nice to have a little report on that, if you could put that together, so we could see about where we sit.
Be nice to see kinda where.
Yeah.
I'd like to look at like the three to five year, you know, are we making, you know, are we catching up with it? We staying even or getting ahead of the curve?
And we're probably still about two years behind on the data.
Yeah.
But it's still be nice to see.
I'd like to see that.
Well, if we could see that for first, second and third class counties, I'm not sure we'd care about small ones.
No.
But for us, the bigger was.
We'll have a compliance update in August and at the same time, Michelle can.
Yeah, at least that was trying to get a feel for where we're at, what's happening.
Yep. It's nice to kinda just compare us to the counties and say, okay, we, you know, are we ahead of the game? We'd like to be ahead of the game a little bit here.
Absolutely. Interestingly, and I know you remember when we reintroduced the syringe exchange.
Oh, yeah.
That was a little bit of a shock.
Yeah.
Everyone. We've had, I think, two cases at least in the last little while. Who've come in for their, their ongoing exchange and who have started in to treatment. And that's the intent of that syringe exchange is to prevent other communicable diseases. And it initiates hopefully them getting into treatment. So it's actually started to spark that a little bit. I thought I'd mention that to you. Yeah.
Yeah, I was sort of too hot.
I knew you were.
I, I support it just because, you know.
The first time you hear it, it's a little shocking.
To drop your needle.
Yeah. Well, if you don't. I use them on my goat quite a bit. Not that I'm worried about his presence.
If you don't have it, you know it's gonna take place out there.
Yeah.
In the park and still is anyway. Yeah.
But it has to be done right and well, or it could turn into a bigger problem, right? You could have needles all over the place outside the place you're offering it. You could have people who are uneducated about it and just. Anyway, it, I, it's still got some issues in Weaver County that I'm a little bit concerned about. The fact that we have to give a full packet of syringes and we can't just give two or three, right? And, and it's because of the law, the way the law is, it says you have to have packaged needles to give them. You can't just give them a needle that's unpackaged. So we get the packages in like, in tins. So they come in and turn in two needles, we have to give them a package of 10 back, right?
I didn't know that.
So that, that, that part to me, and it's because some funny law that just says that. But other than that, we run a, I think, a really good program. And now it's in our facility where we can watch it and we can ask them to go right next door and get involved in services, which I like much better.
Yeah.
Little more control over it.
Yeah, that's good. Good for you.
We sure appreciate you letting us come into your work meeting and talk about this.
This is great.
Getting it in the back of your minds as you're gonna be listening to lots of different things.
Well, I'm glad you came in in advance. Well, we're all on your board. And like I said before, as of right now, we've made no commitments. And nobody's said anything to me, if you do. I don't think to intend this to make any commitments just yet.
Well, if you wanna make any right now while we're.
Well, nobody's asked for anything other than.
Is there something that you've been thinking of that you wish we did in this arena that we didn't consider?
I, you know, you guys are the experts in the field. I never wanna try to overstep. I think I know what you're doing. I mean, I look, you guys come to us. Everything you presented to me makes sense. So that's all I can tell you.
Great.
I suspect as time goes on, we'll think a little more about this.
And as we, as we hear other proposals, we may come to you and say, okay, let's work.
What do you think?
I think, you know, my main objective would be, let's make sure we use the nonprofits like the cottages of hope and.
This Usara.
Usara, yeah.
Those others.
And, and partner, you know.
Partner, yeah.
Even on the MAT.[1762.88]
Is that love, I mean, they're, they're always looking for funds.
We actually do MAT in the jail, you know, and the sheriff has been, uh, accepting, you know, of us doing in and educating the nurses, and they're actually starting, uh, people in the jail.
And we'd like to expand that, and so if the jail is coming to you, or the sheriff's saying, hey, we'd like to expand medication assisted treatment, we're like, we're all on board with that. We'll, we'll come to the table and say, okay, where can we negotiate? Because we wanna work with them on that.
Where I come from here, I wanna give the money to them and have them do it. I don't wanna give the sheriff money to give to them.
Yeah, well, we've gotta have one, I agree, it's gotta have one source, it makes sense to come from you, and then you contract with the sheriff, whatever.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great, thank you.
Join us to leave this copy of the.
Yeah, you'll do that, I'll, I have Shelley run this.
Thank you.
There might be some notes or.
Yeah, that's okay, so Scott, as we get into this, uh, setting up funds in any special way, shape, or form?
So we created a grant fund, um, for the CARES Act, uh, and, uh, I know it was restricted, but I just put rest, I'd like to park this in there as well, and that way we can track, make sure, yeah, that we know where it's going.
I don't care about that.
Yeah.
It seemed like to be a good place for it to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. Better for these guys, and I, I, I think that's, I think that's the right way.
Yeah, then we kinda follow along.
Yeah, we'll track it that way, we'll, we'll keep track no matter where we put it, but that way at least our years are comparatively here to your general fund is keep going up and down.
Well, the way the dispersals, uh, they're right, what they say, the, the high ones, low ones, and, you know, so.
I don't know why they did it.
I'm good.
Well, and I don't think there was a requirement that we spend this like in, I mean, there might be a long-term requirement, but not a short term.
I think you can, I think you can kinda bank it, I think, yeah.
All right, so if we, if you guys could plan on five or six hundred thousand a year, we could just keep kinda flatten that out as much as possible. That'd really be good.
Yeah.
I'd give you.
Just the time to work on sustainability.
Yeah, that's what I like to see is, you know, we, we can bank an extra four hundred thousand this year. And next year a little bit short, you guys, if we have that in the savings account, we just continue to buy junior six hundred, makes things easy for you and for us.
It's a smooth curve.
That I'd like to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, look, we appreciate you coming in. We won't do anything without you knowing.
Okay, I appreciate that, and you can thank Michelle for the organization of that paper.
Of course.
Of course, it's Michelle.
We know that.
We're still a few months away before we see any money.
Yeah.
That what he says?
Few months.
Few months.
Few months, really?
Few months, because the money will go to the state first, and then they have to process it, and then it's fifty day notice to get it to us. So we're still, I'm, I'll be surprised if we see it in the next ninety days.
Christopher was involved through UAC on this, and so he, he knows.
You know who to talk to.
Chris Crockett.
Chris Crockett, yeah. Yeah. Thanks all.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Congratulations. Oh, thank you very much, thanks Kevin.
See y'all.
So it all goes to the state first.
Goes to the state and then it gets distributed from the state to.
Who's next on our list, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, next on our list is closed session.
With Sean in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, frankly, uh, as I look at this, like I told them, I think they get a hundred percent of what they get, or whatever we decide. And then the state doesn't have a whole lot to do theirs.
No.
So I, I would hope we'd get, uh, twenty-five percent of what the state has in, by, as our percentage of, you know? So I would hope that as this money comes down to the counties, that we'll end up seventy-five percent of it.
Well, if they're smart, they'll give it to us, we know where the.
Well, that's the whole point. And every program they have, they have to create.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they don't even have a program.
Where is it a little bit, you know, they've now verged. Health and Human Services. No, he won't be, he's, you know, would have given resources, so who knows what this one's. And that's, that's Andrew Gruber's wife that's in charge.
That's right, exactly that.
She's a good gal. Hey, guys.
Hey. I'd see y'all. Limbael's coming in here.
Sean's in another meeting, so, okay. We got, uh, Sean's that account.
Could I ask, he, he, Sean sent me a note to ask a question really quick, so on our Arca contracts.
Hold on, uh, so, uh, well, Jeremy was online, he just.
Motion to go to closed session.
Just got off.
Second.
So we have a motion to go to a closed session in a second, on fair side.
All right.
That's who it is. Hey. It's not George Jetson, it's Bonham.
That's who it is.
That's who it is.
Who's Bonham? Oh, oh, yeah. Yeah.
He's a singer.
You're like, you're a dead ringer.
Yeah.
I don't know anything about that.
Bonham.
Cause, only cause I love you. All right. Whoa. Got a little mustard, it is, right there.
Look like him with those glasses.
He's got the beard and everything.
Totally, yeah.
He's a rock star. Look at that, right there.
No, I'm just. Well, I've been doing these things for about four weeks. Well, Bonham, that's what Bonham said, yeah, many years ago, two weeks on the first eye, then I'll get the second eye.
Very good.
Get up here.
All right, so this is the three o'clock, uh, group. Uh, to discuss sewer fees. Sean Wilson, you're leading this.
So I, I will actually let Scott Park lead this discussion.
I was, Chad Marhoff was putting after this.
We can let Chad lead, yes.
All for two, did you lose the first one?
Just to the commissioner.
Wow. That's the one.
Oh, there you go.
You did okay.
Also, I think commissioners, we came and met with you here, um.
Is that Sean on this?
Been, what, a couple months ago or so, he kinda talked to me about, um, updating the sewer fees. Kinda went through a little bit of the process of how we came and calculated those, so here's kind of a little bit of the sheet showing you that. Documentation behind it as well.
Shane showing.
And it's on the backside of it, too, kinda how we went through and developed them. Sorry to print out a bunch for everybody, but. Um, essentially, there was a few things that we went through, and it's, um, you know, as far as what the regular maintenance is on the system. To go through and hydro jet and TV the system, so that's regular maintenance, cleaning of them. Doing the visual inspection on that's usually the easiest ways to do the preventative maintenance rather than like till something large happens, so. Um, on the ones in the upper valley, we looked at doing new drain fills for them. Um, assuming that right around the thirty, forty year lifespan of what those drain fills would be, happen to do replacement or maybe maintenance on those. Um, pump of the septic tanks for the systems that are in the upper valley, and we did a repair fund for the manholes, the sewer line. And then, of course, the sewers in, in the roadway, so there's asphalt on that as well. Um, there's electric for those that have the lift stations and phone lines. And pump maintenance for the pumps that we have, and then of course, administration for five dollars each of them, so. Um, when we go through and look at those, and we assume kind of a hundred year lifespan on those, it's kind of the conclusion we came to in our last meeting. Um, and, and if you look at probably the second, uh, third, and fourth sheet, it goes through. Uh, the first few on those kinda show the upper valley, um, the different systems up there, Pine US Trappers crossing Crimson Ridge. If we went through that type of analysis on it, kinda what those monthly fees would be, um, which they kind of go anywhere from, you know, fifty to almost a hundred dollars on some of those. And so, a little bit, that's a function of how many people are connected to it, how, how much sewer line is. Uh, for instance, you know, the, the, uh, one of the systems has seventy-two hundred linear feet of sewer line on one of them has fifty-eight, and you know, almost double the ones on the smaller amount of sewer lines, so. And the very last sheet's the one for out in the western part of the county, uh, monthly payment, uh, it came out about fifty-four dollars, same analysis on it as well, so. In talking with Scott, uh, we know that we've gotta, we've gotta raise these sewer fees, and it kinda came down to a function of what, um, we felt it was a little bit of a shock to probably go up. All of it all at once, and so we like to kind of, uh, do in a percentage of that over the next course of a few years to get, get us to that point, so.
So currently, we're at forty dollars in the Central Weaver sewer area down the lower valley, and Jazz proposing fifty-four dollars, so that would be a twenty-five percent increase. In our upper valley, we're also at forty dollars, um, basically for everything except Crimson Ridge, Rattford Hills, you can see the costs are um, fifty-nine dollars, seventy-five dollars, ninety-four dollars, um, Crimson Ridge. Yeah, Crimson Ridge, we're at thirty-three dollars, but we should be at fifty, um, Rattford Hills, we're at twenty-five dollars, um, and should be. I knew that, that'd be seventy-five, so there's a big difference between there, so, I mean, we've got fourteen entities with truth and taxation notices. You know, our, the question is, is how much do we wanna go? I would propose that we go up like ten percent this year, so from forty dollars to forty-four dollars. Um, and maybe we wanna bump up Crimson Ridge a little bit more, or something like that, but I wouldn't wanna do much more than a ten percent increase this year, and then just kinda plan on that, that we're gonna pass along these increases over time, or would you rather do a big jump? That's, that's the question, but if I send out a notice and say, hey, like you were paying thirty-three dollars a month, now I want you to pay me seventy-five dollars a month. Sean's gonna get a lot of, of phone calls, and so is Rana.
Yeah.
Um, I think we could easily get away with a ten, not, get away is not the right word, I think we could easily raise it ten percent and have people understand uh, a ten percent increase, um, we've eaten these increases, when was the last time we raised for ages, we're twenty seventeen?
So I think two thousand seventeen was.
Yeah.
So what you're saying here, we talk about us eating the difference. What, uh, we're, this is the fund that we're putting away to replace it, that's is where all this has been taken from.
We're covering our operating costs, this is operating cost plus repair. So we do need to get up there, but I just, my concern was that's too big of a jump to do in one year. Um, we should have been doing, I mean, and Jazz been working on this for a while, we, we're trying to do this to build for, so we're planning for the future, it's a great thing that we're doing, I just don't think we can get there in one year, I think we have phased this over several years.
A little bit more of the justification to it as well, is not everybody's connected into these, uh, lots right now as well, there's only a few connections, and so the assumption can be made as well, you know, the use isn't really there, so they're gonna go a little bit longer until it gets to get built.
Is there a standby fee associated with it?
We do not have that, and so that's something the commissioners, uh, you know, the commissioners are, are welcome to, to look at. I know back in two thousand seventeen or a little bit prior to that, at that time, the commissioners didn't wanna do it, but I know, um, Wolf Creek does it, I believe, and I believe there's one or two others.
Yeah, if you own a lot, and the sewer runs down your road. Uh, most places require you to pay the annual fee.
Standby in advance.
Yeah, you just don't have to pay the connection fee.
And I think how, when I was, when I was talking with Robert Wolf Creek, and it's been quite a few years since I spoke with him, it was a reduced amount, it wasn't the total amount.
Right.
What they do, but it was a.
They sold there, that was, they reduced, huh?
Yeah.
In place.
They're like twelve or fifteen bucks or something like that a month. You're out of your subcharge. I mean, it's right there.
Just the right to be able to hook up one time. The fact hate you is nothing, hook up is our problem.
Exactly, yeah, I, yeah, there should be some.
We still have to maintain the infrastructure associated with this. I've, 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 as I've learned a little more, I'm for a standby fee.
We need an ordinance change on that on the subject.
I would.
Yeah, it's not listed in the ordinance right now, we want to change it to include that.
Yeah.
We're proposing a few ordinance amendment anyway, to raise these rates, so we can just throw it in.
Oh, so, yeah, I, I propose we put that in, and then we just determine what that standby fee is. Okay.
It could be at least fifteen, twenty bucks. Well, yeah, I knew why you gotta vote. You know?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So what, what you wanna put, we usually only start off with a ten dollar, I mean, who would we charge it to? Cause you, but you're charging several that aren't hooked up to it right now.
So I think, uh, what this fee would go to is any lot that's created, uh, whether they're connected or not, the connected's included in that amount, but not.
Well, this goes on a tax dollars now, right?
Uh, right now, it's just all monthly. Monthly bills.
Yeah.
Okay, it's a lot harder to collect, I was, I was trying to think, how would we collect?
Yeah, you start trying to collect on lots that haven't been developed.
Yeah.
Well, so if it's a developed lot though, and they haven't built, they just pay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure.
For anything moving forward from here, I think we could do that, but going back on someone right now, I'm not sure how. I guess we could try and look up all of those and then start trying to bill people, we might run into a few problems.
Well, I didn't, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that we go back, I'm just saying, so whoever, let's, let's say you've got a ten lot subdivision, five are built, five are not.
Yes.
So those five going forward should receive a bill.
There you go.
Now, whether that's, and whether that's the developer, or whether that's, you know, three lots may be owned by the developer, two may be. Whoever holds title should pay the standby fee.
Yes, but you, from, from this date forward.
This date forward, no, I don't think we go back.
Not retro.
No, so, but you're saying any of those, so there's a ten lot subdivision right now that only has five houses on there, we're gonna go find out who the other five owners are and start billing them.
Right.
And whatever.
So whoever shows up on the tax rate.
So, yeah, yeah, whoever's on the tax rate.
Yeah.
So.
So I mean, right now, I mean, we'll have like Winston Parkville come in here in the next week or so, that'll, that'll be sixty units just right there.
Is that a month, you do that monthly or annually?
That's a monthly fee.
Yeah. So there needs to be enough, whether it's ten bucks or fifteen, I, let's make sure we put enough in there to cover postage and overhead of doing it, we're not doing that for free.
But what did we say that costs?
Two dollars. It's two dollars a month.
I just, I'd like to make sure we have.
Fifteen dollars.
Yeah, fifteen to twenty bucks.
Oh, great.
Administration, but that also includes a portion of your time and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So the two dollars is just the cost of the envelope, the mailing paper.
I think that would be more like five bucks, but three to five bucks.
For standby fee?
No, in addition, if our, if our fee's ten bucks, let's put five to it to cover our overhead.
Well, I mean, we have an overhead calculation for it, so I would just have whatever.
Whatever, yeah, whatever the overhead is.
Two bucks.
But the direct, well, the direct cost for a mailing is two bucks, it's five dollars is what we're doing, is the admin fee, which includes a portion of Chad's time, a portion of Sean's time, all that sort of stuff, so that's the overhead.
So is that five total, Scott? Five, five totals, overhead cost plus whatever we.
Yeah, I calculate it every year on an annual basis, we calculate it and adjust those amounts every year, so roughly five dollars is.
Whatever the overhead is.
Yeah.
Right. Got three people approved.
So that's to have a standby fee, and we'll, we'll look at the amount, we'll come back with a proposal to you.
That's gonna help us a ton.
And I wouldn't mind, uh, sending out a notice saying first of the year, this is gonna start happening.
So we do, we do the standby notice as first of the year, cause it's gonna take us time to find out.
And then you wanna send that out in September, October, saying as of the first of the year, this is what we're doing with the lot.
Okay.
The fact you're not connected doesn't mean that you don't have a responsibility to this.
Yep.
Because it's therefore you're using the, you can use any time, you can connect any time, and you need to be participating in the replacement cost of it. It adds value to your lot, it makes your lot worth more, because whoever buys it can connect.
Well, I, I don't think there's an HOA up there, that whether you build on or not, you're paying HOA.
You, you're right.
Absolutely. So this is no difference, so.
We just haven't, we need money on the table.
So we'll do the standby fee, we'll come up with an amount, um, are you okay with a ten percent increase across the board on this existing service fees?
I am.
Yeah, I'm good with that, that makes sense.
You, yeah, it's gonna take us a while to catch up.
It will, but I mean, the other option is some of these people are getting a one hundred, hundred and fifty percent increase.
Oh, I was just thinking, I got, I get what you're saying, ten percent's very generous.
And we could, instead of going, I could go from forty to forty-five instead of forty-four, I mean, I could, there, this is kind of a swag number, it's, it's what do we feel comfortable doing, you know? Cause we could justify going the whole way, so we go from forty to forty-five.
You're forty and talking forty-five, why don't you go to fifty, that's a ten dollar increase.
Which we could, it's a twenty, twenty-five percent increase.
Yeah, twenty-five percent, but like you say, you could really justify going a hundred and twenty-five percent.
That's where I'd be. Fifty?
Uh, I'd be going from forty to fifty like that. So ten, right percent.
Yeah.
So twenty-five percent, so that, so I'll do twenty-five percent on.
Twenty.
Well, four, ten divided by the forty, it's twenty-five percent increase from the base, so according to fifty is twenty-five percent increase. It's how we have, and that's just how we have to disclose on the taxes.
Yeah, it's going up or coming down, figuring it out.
Yeah.
All the same.
And then plus the standby fees will make a lot of headway.
Yeah, and then I'll make the same percentage change on the Crimson Ridge and Radford Hills, or do you want me to bump them up to be fifty? So that'd go from twenty-five dollars to fifty for Radford Hills. Or do you want me to go up twenty-five percent?
Yes.
Say that again?
So most of them are at forty dollars, but Radford Hills is only twenty-five dollars.
And Crimp, there's two that are below the forty dollars.
Radford Hills and Crimson Ridge, so Radford Hills, it's a twenty-five. Do you want me to go up twenty-five percent, or do you want me to go up to fifty?
Why, why do those vary so much?
So, so that, a lot of it's a function of, this one is Radford Hills, so we've split everything out between Radford Hills and Crimson Ridge because it's in its own district. I D U S, she improvement district, but the difference is, is you got Crimson Ridge, which is a mechanical system, has electrical operational, a lot more of elaborate of a system. And Radford Hills isn't, and so we looked at it as a function of how many people are in there with what the maintenance is, and that's what it came out to at the time, so.
He makes a good point. Uh, if I lived there, I'd give me a year, won't argue with you. Why should I pay extra if it's not necessary?
I don't disagree, um, so that's why we have those different rates.
So maybe I'll change Radford Hill, yeah, maybe I'll just make them all go up ten bucks.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I would stay with the percentages because obviously the difference between Crimson and Rad, Radford because of electrical, Radford's on a drain system. I mean, if I'm in that, why am I paying extra? I don't, I don't have electrical, I don't have this, I don't have that.
I'm good there.
So everything, I'm gonna move everything up twenty-five percent.
So whatever that percent is, I would just say, look, everybody's going up the same.
Well, twenty-five percent to the dollar.
Yeah, yeah, I'll round, I'll round.
Round it up.
Okay, so that's great. There you go.
Okay, and then one last thing is we need to add a fee. Central Weaver Sewer has, I think, six houses that are outside of their district that are being serviced by Central Weaver Sewer. And they've told us that they're going to start billing them, billing us more for them because they're not paying property tax. So I wanna pass that increase on to the, those six residents, so they're outside, whatever the difference between pay bills. That's what, that's the amount we're passing on.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll propose this in an ordinance change, um.
Their connection fees. Did they pay those?
So most of the, the individuals that we have, it's all the connection fees usually for the infrastructure that's been installed. In this case, most of it, the developer installs all of it. So we haven't really had a connection fee for it, so included in itself, the lot. Um, we do have.
A lot more did those fact, yeah, those impact fees, did they pay uh, Central Weaver?
The impact fees, we should have collected them at the time of building.
They just don't get their property tax off of them.
Yeah, I'm just sitting here wondering, uh, cause you know, that's a thirty-five hundred bucks a piece or twenty-five, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who's water jetting for sixty-five cents a foot?
Um, that was a bit I just got from Twin D, but they're all pretty much exactly the same.
Twin D?
Hmm, that's a sixty-five for jetting it and sixty-five for cameras as well. Then they have mope fees and all that other stuff, so.
Right.
All right.
Will you, you, will you text me that information?
Yep.
Thanks.
That actually is Scott?
Yeah, so we're gonna work on the standby fee, everything else is gonna go twenty-five percent rounded to the.
Great. I like it.
Um, oh, sorry, I have one last thing. Late fee, we wanna add a late fee. Currently, we don't have a late fee in our fee ordinance. We wanna add eighteen percent or a dollar, whichever.
Yeah.
Okay, that too.
Okay.
You okay, Gage?
Yeah. Makes sense. I'm surprised you didn't have one already.
Well, we have, that, that is a whole, that's an issue for another day. We had one that wasn't authorized in our statute, but. And then the last thing on this is, uh, we wanna charge a two dollar paper statement fee. We want the ability to charge a two dollar paper statement fee. If we have to send you out a paper statement, uh, we want the ability to charge two dollars. Well, I don't think we're gonna start charging them two dollars right now. But we're trying to use this to get everybody to sign it through our electronic system, so we don't have to send out statements and everything like that. We just want that permission.
As long as they have iPhones, I think we're okay with that.
There are a few other elderly people who are pushing back on that.
I'm sure of that, but geez, tell them to get their grandkid in there and they'll do it.
Well, my hope is if we can get eighty-five or ninety-five percent of people on the electronic, then I won't charge the two dollars, we won't have to charge the five grandmas the two bucks.
Yeah. I have just the ability to do it, not necessarily.
We're, we're trying to, I hate to say threaten, we're just trying to.
I know, but in the end, we own the system, we do the billing, it's our responsibility.
It's our cost.
Yeah, raise our fee two dollars.
If they want a paper statement, that's two bucks.
Yeah.
It's an option, you don't have to take it.
Sure.
It's kinda like getting.
Why should you have to pay extra for your bill? It's your invoice. It's our responsibility as a county to send it to.
Free, it's just a delivery system. If you want it in paper, you're gonna pay for the paper, the envelope, and the stamp. But if you want it delivered to you on an email, then it doesn't cost. It's really simple.
Yeah, but I don't know if I agree with that.
Well. You, you don't have to agree with it, but the fact of the matter is, is there's a fee for that kind of stuff.
Kind of raises the hair on the back.
I just need two of you to agree to it as well.
I'm with Harvey on that.
Okay.
There you go, two to one to give.
Yeah, I get it.
Gets old.
Hey, I'm old and you know, I'll figure some way to pay it on the internet to save two, you know, I'll save two bucks whenever I can. Just set up your auto pay.
We're trying to get people on the.
No. It's a motivation. The elderly, but on the flip side, you know?
Yeah, kick your grandma. It's you.
All right, you better hurry, get out of here before.
I tried.
I got one of the two, my court ones here, so. Can I go first, Gary?
Sure, mine's fairly quick.
Okay.
So we've got WACOG money that's gonna start trickling in for the next phases of Twelfth Street. Uh, as you're aware, currently, we've built Twelfth Street out to about seventy-one hundred west, which is about where the park is in Greece.
Yep.
Uh, the goal is with the next amount of money, as it comes in, we'd like to get it all the way out to our mega site at ninety-three.
Fine.
We've taken that design to get us to where we have to a hundred percent, but however. From where we ended to ninety-three fifty, there's still some work that needs to be done. So, my question for you, historically, we had CRS engineers do that design work for us on the previous phases. However.
However, Harvey left the hand on the door, he opted, and he turned right around, full face.
He loves the RS. I knew that would get your attention, Chris, um, at this point, to change horses and having somebody do that design for us. I actually, it scares me a lot that things would be lost in translation.
Hell, sometimes a little fear is good.
Until there's a problem with the change.
You do what I love, where you pick me up.
So my question is, my question is, do we use the same company to take it out the rest of the way? Or do we put it out to bid and have somebody else pick it up and take it to the finish line?
Yeah, I'm, I just didn't have a bid. We gotta has built, we know where it's at. We got no information we need. Let's go.
Got a great engineers. I don't mind bidding about it.
I don't either.
Today's technology. I'm assuming CRS will bid on it.
I would assume.
Trust me.
Brooke's gonna bring you out five side of ice cream if you tell her that. And she's the one running that money through the way, absolutely.
I'm assuming they would bid on it, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely, so.
I don't wanna exclude CRS, but we need to bid it, but that's.
We may have a disagreement on that, but. So, okay, that gives me a flavor for what I gotta do. This, I wanted to ask you early enough, so if that's the direction you wanted to go, I'll start moving ahead.
On the process, when you rank that, those bids, I want you to put in there a contingent for fifty percent. Contingent for previous dealings of Canada.
So, let me, let me jump in here, just quickly before you jump in there.
Why do you?
Yeah, because I've got Scott here. So, I know, uh, you had a quick discussion about the nature center and that extra five thousand dollars. The only reason that's been brought back up is because I was sending out the funding agreements, noticed that there's a twenty thousand. But I had gotten approvals from Commissioner Farrow and Commissioner Jenkins to up that to five, and I've told Caitlin Goff, there is twenty-five.
Oh, I remember that now that you came to it.
I did. So Harvey said no, but you two said yes, so you're two to one then.
I said yes.
Are you okay with the five thousand?
I'm not gonna.
No, I, you're right, I, I told you yes before.
Backwards on you.
Okay, I, I, and I apologize that it came to this.
All right, you've got a chance here to change your vote. Let's, let's go.
Yeah, you wanna go unanimous?
Let's go with the people, Harv, come on.
Oh my God.
You know, you talked about two to one, you just got two to one, and there, there you go.
All right, Scott, you heard that?
There's a name.
We're good at twenty-five?
Okay, as long as I get.
I'm, I'm glad you remind, I forgot about it.
Okay.
All right.
I've already told you once, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna make. I don't wanna make Sean look bad.
I appreciate that. I do, I, I do appreciate it.
Show us.
So, okay, I, I will change that agreement and send it out to him.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm glad you clarified that.
Courtland, Sean asked me to just kind of bring up your email about the easement here. We wanted to get the commissioners' field. Do you wanna kinda talk about that or? Sure. The one from Kenyon?
Yes, yep.
There is a lawyer attorney, Kenyon Dove, who represents a client who owns one of the buildings, and he was a little bit vague. At least with me, did he talk to you?
He hasn't called me yet.
Okay, you know, he represents a client who owns one of the buildings just to the north here along Washington Boulevard.
And who's this?
We talked to these people we talked to when we were out there looking and saying about.
This, this art studio through our north parking lot.
Yeah.
On this side.
But what name did you mention?
The, the attorney's named Kenyon Dove, and I don't know who his client is.
Okay.
He's with, uh, which firm is it?
He's with Smith and Olds.
Smith and Olds, yeah, okay, down the street. And they're wanting an easement, they're wanting a written easement to get through our north parking lot to the back of those buildings just to the north of us. And.
Because one used to exist, uh, where was the parking structure?
That's what he said, is there used to be some kind of right of way for them, and so I just.
How could that be? There was no, there was a wall on the south side or north side that he couldn't drive through.
You know that, you know that, well, it showed on one of the. I think they're talking a long time ago. Long time ago, but you know that, how it comes up and there's that little roadway that used to go all the way through to.
That's.
Like on one of the plats, yeah.
Going north?
No, going south, so.
Or going south?
You come up in the north, no parking, there's that little.
You're right.
And when they.
Where we cut it off with our parking cars. Okay, you're right, I remember that now.
Come across there, but.
Right, so.
That's, that's what I'm saying. I think what they're saying is, there used to be one there, and there's gonna be something there, and so we want an easement. That we can come across your property to get the access of our businesses.
Yeah, and that would be a Weaver Center Owners Association question ultimately, since they own a property of a, including a parking lot. And I know that issue of easement has come up before in various.
It has. I'd like, I'd like to get that resolved because we're gonna need to do that.
I think that's what they wanna do.
Yeah, a little back. You know, I'm not sure I wanna do that, Gage. I mean, there's, there's been a, a fricking parking structure up and down since then, and we wanna come back now and. Give him an easement across that property.
Well, I'm not, no, I'm not.
Asking that property, he's asking across the north property so they can access. Off of Washington.
He wants it off of Washington, not.
I don't know, don't wanna give that either. He's SOL here. Uh, the way our property line shows, this shows that we go in behind all those buildings, then come back out. I, I'm not sure he's got any in there. He'll have to come and.
Legally, does he have any stance? He, I'm sure the right of way existed a, at some time.
I remember.
But it, it might have existed as a road, not a parking right of.
Well, but if they had a right of way that benefited them, I don't know how we take that away.
It would depend on.
We've already done it, is my point.
Well, we, we've done it physically, but we may not have done it legally.
It would depend on how it arose and how it was cut off, and I remember asking, and I think Scott asked for any kind of evidence of any kind of. Written.
Right.
Easement or anything like that, and so far, nobody.
They have not produced.
And so if they acquired an easement through use and it wasn't in writing, then. You know, that's legally the same as if it were in writing, but we, we would still, I don't wanna say we, I guess it depends on who owned the property at the time it was. Cut off, I, which I guess happened. When the parking structure was put up and the, the.
Probably when the parking car.
I don't know, but then the question comes up, do they have some kind of easement by necessity or something like that, and it gets kind of murky and complicated, and so. I've never delved into that to see what right they might have to that. I could take a more serious look at that and see if there's any legal right they would be able to.
Well, I'd like to find out exactly if they have a right when that was cut off. I don't believe they probably have anything in writing. I don't believe there's probably any recorded documents. But I would probably say if this went to court, they'd have a very good stance for. An eas, you know, a prescriptive right because of ease, because of use.
Yeah, because even through the north parking lot.
Yeah, and that, we haven't covered, yeah, I mean, you can check state law, they've used that, oh, I know they've used that for at least twenty years.
Yeah, absolutely.
So for us to, for us to go in there and say, hey, now we're gonna put a building here, we're gonna cut your access off.
Too late.
We're gonna, we're gonna get beat on that.
Likely, yeah, if they've been using it that long.
I would rather negotiate, I'd rather negotiate with them in terms of future use and, you know, based, based upon what happens with this building. That they, that they would agree, any type of parking rights need to be negotiated with a future owner or, you know. I don't, but I'm, I'm not in favor of giving them an easement right now.
That's good.
Who's that?
Everybody.
Guys to the north here. Over here?
Uh-huh.
Why? Well, what I'm saying is if.
They said they had one.
If it, if it, if it went to court, we would probably lose because they've been using it at a necessity.
Well, I was less late five, ten years ago. There we have Leanne do a search on that.
We, we can, and I think Scott Mendoza has, he's done some work.
Yeah.
He's asked them to provide documentation, which they haven't been able to do.
Right.
So.
Until it comes to it, but I'd like to know exactly what our legal uh, position is.
Okay. So, in the meantime, when Kenyon calls me up, tell him we're looking into it.
Will you let me know?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Are they being nice about it or?
They just reached out initially to say, can we get something in writing?
Okay, and Kenyon's, he's a really nice guy.
Yeah.
Uh, I think they're just concerned that if we do leave the Weaver Center.
They should be.
They don't, they don't wanna negotiate with the new owner.
No, I. I don't, if I was in their shoes, I'd want the same thing.
Well, I will look into that, man, and work with Sean to try to figure out where it stands.
Yeah, very good.
All right.
Wow. Three twenty-nine.
We're right on schedule.
Wow.
I run a tight meeting.
Wow, boy, I'll say.
You send Yul Berry in?
Two to one, one way, two to one, another. You look, you're always on the winning side here.
No, no, I've watched enough of that stuff.
That's what matters about it. I had to pull my trailer down Thursday morning, have them put the tires on, they took me up real quick.
Did they?
Went to go to, on our trip, and looked down, and it was bolted. But they, I was right down there when they opened up, and. Well, they had to get it out there like.
Makes me happy. Thanks, well.
Yeah, I didn't see that it was that big a deal. He, he was making a federal case out of us.
He was. He's like, all he, I wanted to say, it's the past three days, send us two documents, and we'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
We'll talk about it.
He, yeah, he was a little wound up.
Yeah, it's okay.
Boy, over it, we got two of the three pieces of soup coming in.
Yeah, it's too hot for three. Also, we. I'm gonna have to talk about what's gonna happen this year with property tax.
Oh, you're about to be there. Do you need like armed security at your house?
Uh, maybe not in my house, we probably ought to have a guy or two here.
So what did we figure the other day? Eleven out of fifteen cities have got this taxation levels?[1610.28]
I think the median proposed increase is gonna be over five hundred bucks.
Really?
Per household.
Per household.
Five hundred.
Oh.
Well, that's an excessive people.
Five hundred per.
Think about that, that's gonna be a thousand and a fifty number for a business.
If everyone goes up forty dollars and there's eleven, and I'm not sure you know all of them yet. That, that doesn't include Weaver Basin, they're gonna go up, you know, they're all small districts, all going up.
Yeah, all the major, except for us, all the major tax entities are.
Yeah, you sure we're not going up? Do you see that article in the paper?
I didn't.
Uh, a little, uh, letter to the editor, he said we were going up, didn't he, Gage?
He did. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be, folks are gonna get excited, so we just wanna make sure that they understand, you know, value change, so it, how deep in the weeds you wanna get it, need to get with you guys?
I know about the value change, that lowers the tax rate.
Yeah, but it's, so we have three buckets, we have real property, we have personal property, and they're centrally assessed or state assessed. So, this year, there's a big shift from state assessed and personal property to real property, and we're primarily real property anyway. But this year was fairly significant shift, which means per hundred thousand, those other two go down, even if their values go up, their tax per hundred thousand goes down.
Right, the rate.
They're, yeah.
The actual dollars that pay stays the same.
It could be, yeah.
Yeah, if they don't change it.
But then, within the real property bucket, you know, we had such a huge increase in residential values, it shifted more towards residential. And you have Weaver School District, Dogon School District, Dogon City, South Dogon City, Roy, Riverdale, North Dogon City, as a pleasant view. And I can't remember all of them, and then, uh, Weaver Basin Water, they're all proposing a tax increase, so it's culminated in pretty every shift. Mine went up six hundred over six hundred dollars. I don't know if you guys have looked at yours.
I haven't got mine.
Well, I haven't got mine either, but I just, you can look it up online, and it says preliminary.
I've already had guys.
That's if everybody gets their income.
I didn't call you over.
You can call me over.
I know, but I didn't. I felt really good, I felt really good.
Thank you, appreciate that, but, I mean, it's, it is what it is, we have constitutional duty to value all property at market value. It's taxable anyway.
Can't wait to hear from Rod.
Oh, yeah, he'll be calling.
Oh, gosh.
You're done, you're done.
They're gonna have a heartache, because we're gonna show values have gone up fifteen, twenty percent.
Yeah.
And they're gonna blame it on you.
Yeah.
Then, uh.
That, values went up over thirty, Gage.
Over thirty?
Residential stuff, yeah, thirty percent.
No kidding?
No, not a joke. And, and that includes all the new growth and stuff, but then.
Thirty percent.
And, and we're not unique either, Davis County actually went up thirty-four percent, uh, Utah County went up some places forty percent.
You know, I wonder if we could get ahead of this, and have Dicho do an article and give it to the standard.
No, I thought, we need to do that.
Yeah, telling people, say, look.
Yes.
You need to understand what's happened in the market. This is what's, and it's gonna be reflected in your increases.
Yeah. Well, and I also got, you know, Sue Wilkerson, I called her and said, hey, will you act as a reference? So, somebody outside of the county can.
What'd she say?
Well, I mean, she understands what's going on, I'm, for somebody to call her, a reporter to call her and back us up. Sue'll back us up.
She's still not too sore about that, no drinking to find you there.
I didn't talk to her about that.
Oh, don't. She's eaten my lunch on that.
Is she really?
She didn't care for you on that.
Oh.
Yeah, but she.
No drinking to find you, you hard Eddie. I'm out there, I'm out there on the shore, shore.
Yeah.
Uh, in my, uh.
Flip flop Speedo. Yeah, Speedo having a beer.
Yeah, you wanna have a beer.
If you can't picture me in a Speedo, somewhere on the shore, find you, if that's not offensive enough, put a beer in my hand.
Does that mean?
No, don't sweat it. Well, I think we need to start messaging this.
We gotta do that.
And the main thing we wanna message is, look, you guys need, anybody that's concerned about this, which you should be concerned, need to go to these, your time now is the truth of taxation.
Yeah.
Don't wait until you get your tax notice that has Weaver County on it.
In fact, that's a good point.
And start calling out.
We gotta put that out prior to them.
Oh, absolutely.
So they can, uh.
And folks need to remember, they're appealing their value, not their tax.
Yeah.
Value, better truth in taxation here, right?
In fact, John, maybe you wanna put it out, because that looks real good coming from your office. Say, look, this is what's happening in the market right now, and if you wanna get ahead of this, go, uh, appeal your valuations.
Yeah.
Well, go, you, you have the right to appeal your valuation, but, but you also have the right to go to your truth in taxation, because that's where you wanna get hit.
That's where you're gonna get hit. Exactly right.
Yeah, that, that looks real good coming from you.
So Sasha still around? She the contact on there?
Lindsay. Lindsay. We got Lindsay.
Somebody I've heard, you know?
Yeah, oh, yeah. We'll be meeting tomorrow. We'll be with her. Tomorrow, Thursday.
Listen, will you do me a Thursday favor, though?
We'll call her today.
Yeah. Give her this, Doc.
We'll send her your way.
Okay. Oh, let's see, I wanna get Lindsay.
Yeah, that's really good, this is a good heads up.
I think that should come from you, John.
Okay.
I do, too. Makes you look good. You're doing your job.
Yeah, don't, don't shoot the messenger. Here's what's going on.
Yeah, talk to your neighbor.
But if we, yeah, if we wait till after all, when that tax notice comes out.
We're gonna get it in live.
We're gonna, oh, yeah, we're gonna.
It's gonna be two thousand eight all over again.
In fact.
We may just have John Thompson in here.
This ought to be, uh, this ought to be your message. That'll be your headline, don't shoot the messenger.
Yeah.
Yeah. Tax, don't shoot the messenger. You get it to yourselves.
Yeah, just because Weaver County's at the top of your notice doesn't mean it's all going to Weaver County.
Well, we oughta start with the fact that we're not raising taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
That really is, we gotta start with that, we're not raising taxes, but here are the places that are, and here's the numbers, and.
Yeah, here's, here's where you can find the.
Here's where you can find it.
You don't have to say that they are raising taxes, you just have to say they're having truth and taxation hearing, and.
Yeah.
You need to, Dan.
Yeah, the following places are having truth and taxation hearing, and we're just not on the list.
Yeah.
That's exactly, that's a great idea. You got that contact.
Oh, thank you.
Wow, sorry, it's a green dot, not a blue, it's not my contact.
Rusty Cannon the other day, had a group text, and he's like, who's the, I can't remember, he's pretty much, who's the farting bastard who has an Android? With that.
What did he call you? Farting bastard?
That's what I say, he's farting bastards, from a nineteen eighties movie, but he, he said something derisive about my phone.
Really, just come over to the dark side.
Yeah. iPhone, it's a computer, not a toy.
It's a communication device, not a computer for us.
Remember when your teachers would say, you're never gonna have a calculator in your pocket, you're not gonna carry around a calculator in your pocket? Boy, yeah, I got a computer right here.
If they, if they said that, think of all the other stuff they told us, there's a bunch of malaria.
Ton of stuff.
I wouldn't be a teacher today.
No way.
No way.
Oh, okay, I mean, I know a bunch of teachers that tell their kids, don't go into teaching.
Oh.
Don't do it.
Yeah.
They did it anyway.
Tell them why.
Yeah.
I think over your meeting. That's okay.
All right, John, anything else?
Ready for the discussion on taxes?
The hammer.
Centrally assessed tax appeals.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got three of them that have been filed already this year, and every year since I've started here at least, we've joined in those appeals by filing a cross appeal so that we can be a party to those appeals. And the question I have for you is, do you want us to file cross appeals again?
I liked your counsel in the past and would like to continue myself doing it again.
Okay.
Does it do us any good, because we're really not actively involved in the litigation?
I question that every year.
Well, yeah, I, I've always thought it was good to have a seat at the table to watch, but I'm of the opinion that that's really, it's not a seat at the table so much, it's a seat three or four rows back with a set of binoculars, so you can watch what's happening, but we really don't participate.
Right. Yeah, a couple of things, and this is really kind of a policy consideration, and John may weigh in here. When there are these centrally assessed appeals, when the tax commission goes to review them, or when the courts go to review them, one consideration is if they only see, for instance, Salt Lake County and the Property Tax Division, how does that look compared to if there are twelve or fifteen or twenty-five counties all joined in the appeal? To let it be known that their voice is unified with the Property Tax Division, and maybe Salt Lake County. And so that's one thing that does maybe make a difference, that show of solidarity. And that's probably the primary consideration, because you're right, I don't act as much as John may want me to, I don't actively get out there and hire expert witnesses and go to hearings.
We don't want to.
Yeah, um, so we, it also allows us, as needed, to share in the cost of litigation, which, again, I mean, we get the benefit either way, frankly, if the Property Tax Division prevails in one of these by, you know, getting, say, Pacific Corp's property assessed at a certain level as opposed to the billion dollar reduction that Pacific Corp asks for. Um, we got the benefit, uh, whether or not we actively participate, but, um, goodwill with the other counties and kind of the show of solidarity before the tax commission and courts. John, what are your thoughts?
I agree with Courtland, like I always do, because he's much smarter than I am. But, uh, it's, it's something else that it does for us, is it slows the shift from state assessed properties to residential properties, like we're seeing this year. And I've, you know, started calculating the statistics, and, and over time, it's not a huge shift, but, you know, we've gone from eighty percent real property to eighty-five percent, and I think this erects a ninety-one percent real property, and, and part of it's because, you know, we, we're developing real property like we want, uh, and it's good for us, it's good for everybody when we see development, but, uh, we also see a slow erosion on that state assessed side.
Yeah, yeah, we need to, we need to slow that erosion.
Because it does, I mean, we.
Should we, uh, be filing or watching?
Well, I, it's, it's strength in numbers, I mean, it's, it's, whether it makes a huge difference or not, I don't know. I don't, it doesn't hurt us to be on that.
I agree, it doesn't hurt.
Doesn't hurt us, and to me, uh, and I agree, gives the tax commission, if you've got ten or fifteen counties signed on versus one or two, um, you know, the tax commission is gonna look at that a little differently. So I, I don't think it hurts us.
How much does it cost us to join?
A little bit of my time, um, beyond that, usually, um, you know, we've got a couple of lingering cases where Tom Peters, uh, was handling those for us from back in twenty fifteen, maybe twenty sixteen even, and before that. But since then, we've backed off on hiring anybody.
Right.
And I don't actually see bills that come in, I, I assume that we, I, I should check. Um, I assume that we share in those costs when they hire expert witnesses to present the county's case, uh, um, I don't know the answer to that.
But we pay a pro-rated share.
Sure.
For it.
So, yeah, if Weaver County makes up ten percent or five percent of the overall reduction, then that's the proportion that we would refund, yeah.
Yeah, I. The potential benefit we get is a lot, you know, basically pays itself, in my opinion. And that we could get hurt worse if there's only two or three, and then they take it from a billion doll, you know, they, they adjust that value down, we're gonna take more few, future, more erosion, that's where we're at.
Well, also, if we don't participate, we also don't have the right to appeal.
Yeah, right.
So if the tax commission comes to a decision or that we dislike, and.
The point though is, we never appeal anyway.
Yeah, we just join in what other.
We just join in what others do.
Usually, I mean, it's.
But we can.
It's a theoretical right.
You know.
We, we have like, we, if we don't join, we don't have a ability to appeal. Not, not that we, we all are shit, but.
Yeah, and, and I do question it every year, because it feels like, honestly, a lot of paperwork that comes across our desks for.
I've always been in favor of it. I've always said, yeah, let's get in. This year, I'm saying, look, do we really wanna be in? In the other three years I've been involved, I have not felt like we needed to be in, and that we, there was a strong purpose. I'm just telling you.
Harvey?
I, I'd like that, I'm gonna go with your suggestion.
Okay. So we've got three taxpayers out of now who have filed, and I think I've explained before, but taxpayers have a ninety-day window to file their appeals from May first to August first. We have a sixty-day window to file our cross appeal. So those who file in May, we have to file our cross appeals before sixty days lapse, which means in July sometime. Meanwhile, there are always a few stragglers who file right at the end of July before that August first deadline. So I'll have to come before you again in August or September to say, we already did this, you already approved the first three. Here are the other two or five, or however many who filed their appeals since then, it's kind of annoying, to say the least, that we don't have until they've all filed to make up our mind, but anyway, I'll probably be back with you in a month or two to let you know that others have filed, so I will, based on my hearing from at least two of you.
Two.
Go ahead and file the cross appeals on the three, which is Pacificor, Lumen, which used to be Central Link, and then Utah Railway Company.
All right. Two to one.
Either that, or you just call your buddy John Valentine, tell him to deny the appeal.
He's online, buddy. I call him with news for sure.
Okay, thank you.
We never saw eye to eye.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
I bust somebody out to support him, we've got zero. Yeah, I'm not, well, I don't think he gives much of anything. So let's get together tomorrow. Oh, yeah.
Well, thank you, Courtland.
Well, we appreciate you guys.
All, all we need is the bill of sale and the original registration. If, they just wanna take a photo and send it to Monica.
Okay.
We'll take a look at it.
Well, so did his wife talk to somebody, or?
Yeah, his wife talked to Monica, or my personal property director, and Monica told her all this stuff, but sometimes it gets lost in translation.
So all he needs is what?
The, I'll send you an email, but it's.
Send me an email.
The bill of sale and the original registration, when it exceeds that thirty-day threshold, we just.
We're, we're probably talking, what, a hundred bucks, or, I mean.
I don't know, I don't see the reason not to give it to them.
No, okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thanks.